Okay. Good morning, everybody. It feels like we are ready to go. I'm gonna go. Get us started and I'll call to order this joint meeting of the Anchorage School Board and the Anchorage Assembly. We are scheduled from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's now 10:04 a.m. And we'll start with a roll call. I'll clerk.
Member Myers?
Here.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Littlefield?
Here.
Member Rivera? Member Johnson?
Here.
Chair Constant?
Here.
Vice Chair Zalatell? And it's my understanding that Member Bronga is excused.
Yes.
Member Rowland? Member Brawley?
Here.
Member Solt is currently telephonic?
Here.
Member Presverdia? Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, I'm the school district.
If Ms. Sullivan will call roll.
President Holloman?
Here.
Vice President Jacobs?
Present.
Member Bellamy? Member Domi?
Here.
Member Higgins? Member Lewis? Member Wilson?
So it sounds like you have a quorum.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Next, we'll go ahead and proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll go ahead and read the school district's land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Dinana people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Dinana people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. Anchorage School District is committed to diversity and inclusion. It is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community. So next, we have minutes from previous meetings. There are minutes from the December 6th, 2024 meeting and the December, September 27th, 2024 meeting. Do we approve these? Is that a procedure that we do here?
Um, we normally have it as part of the consent agenda, but you're the chair, so you get to decide.
So, um, we don't really have a consent agenda here per se versus a regular other agenda. So I'll just go ahead and ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Zalatell, seconded by Ms. Brawley. Um, is there any discussion on any of the minutes? I see no discussion. Is there any objection to the minutes being adopted? And I would note that Ms. Wilson has just joined us. Welcome. I'm hearing no objection, so I think it could be noted that, uh, the joint meeting minutes are now approved. Next, we have the approval of the agendas. Are there anything to add to the agenda?
Chair Constant?
Mr. Salt.
I would like to have a brief period to talk about the decision regarding Lakewood Elementary School. If that, if we have time.
So, um, I think that that can be added under other matters of mutual concern, um, too. And maybe a little more broad about not just that one, there are a couple of schools, but which school was it again?
Lakewood Elementary.
Lakewood, so we'll start.
Thank you.
There's no objection. All right, um. So there is, uh, there are, I should say, a couple of members of the public here. It's our standard procedure, uh, under the Assembly's rules to do that at the end of the meeting. The question for the members. Is there any objection if we take on hearing from those individuals first? Okay, I'm not hearing or seeing any objection, so we'll go ahead and consider. The agenda has been amended to move up, uh, before item D. Uh, public comment. And so, um. Other than that, is there any other proposed changes? Then I'd like to ask unanimous consent with the, that we approve the agendas or any objection to the approval of the agenda as amended? Hearing no objection, so now we'll go ahead and move into our audience participation part and we'll go ahead and call up Denise Worth. And I don't know who is keeping time. Thank you. Uh, welcome. Is it three minutes? Welcome. Please state your name, what part of town you're from. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Denise Worth, and I am here to call foul on the decision by the Anchorage, uh, School Board to allot Lakewood Elementary to a school that is currently already ensconced in an A and, um, ASD building, rent-free, has another two to three years on that building. Two, has two and a half million dollars in reserve, taxpayer money in reserve, to, uh, make amends to this building if, if needed. And three, um. Oh. Probably the most important. Doesn't fill the, the Lakewood Elementary by 50%. They have a student enrollment somewhere between 230 and 270. If we split that difference, it's 250. Look, Lakewood Elementary fits 500. They went against the ASD administration recommendations for this. Their recommendation in rightsizing and the mission for rightsizing is to place the best school in the best building, the best fit. They went against that at all odds. And voted for, um, ANCCS, I hope I got that acronym right, to go into Lakewood. So how did this travesty happen? We learned that in December, there was a promise made to prioritize ANCCS. No guardrails were placed on that, such as if it's the right building, if it's the right size, in the right location. Just that it would be prioritized. So when an amendment was floated at the meeting without any prior discussion of this, using words like abandonment and fail and reminding the board that they made this promise. They then voted to change the recommendation to, uh, place ANCCS in Lakewood rather than the charter school that perfectly fits the enrollment is not currently in an ASD building and is facing a financial cliff. This goes against your rightsizing mission. You failed the AS, the greater ASD community. And now you have to do what my teenagers would say, man up and own your fail. So what can you do now? I suggest a revote, and I believe Robert's rules, um, allows for this. I also suggest that anyone with an implied or, or stated special interest recuse themselves from this vote. Thank you.
All right, we also have an individual, Ryan K. Please come forward, state your name, from what part of town you're from. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Ryan K. I'm here as a $6,000 a year, just ASD taxpayer. What I witnessed during the last rightsizing recommendation was unethical and downright illegal. The administration's recommendations never stood a chance because of the backdoor deal that took place beforehand. The member who proposed the amendment, as well as the one who instantly seconded it, have violated municipal rules of conflict, if not bribery. I'll be emailing you guys all the information and campaign disclosures. Manny Acuna, the APC Chair of the Alaska Native Charter School, as well as an active and prominent member of IBEW Local 1547. Certain board member also works for IBEW 1547. All those who voted to go against the administration's recommendations receive money from local IBEW 1547. Again, the awarded school, their APC Chair works for the union. Someone here works for the union. Someone gets thousands of dollars from the union. If that isn't a conflict of interest? I don't know it is. Again, Lakewood was bought and sold in thousand-dollar increments. Hundreds of students and parents for months advocated for a school whose lease ends in August. While only six to seven showed up last week from ANCS. Who has years on their lease? They didn't need to show up because it was a done deal. No wonder parents are fleeing this district. This wasn't about rightsizing. This is quid pro quo. Again, Lakewood was bought and sold. This is just two days of me searching on an iPhone to get this information. I can't wait to see what the ethics office and the news outlets find as well, because I've already shared this information with them. But hey, I'm sure it's all just a big coincidence. Find myself leaning middle to left on most issues, but left or right, corruption's corruption. But it is a Friday and it is payday. So I'd like to buy the next school closure.
All right, let someone please come gather this litter that was left by the individual who just testified. Yeah, it's just litter. It's fake. Uh, performance art. Everybody, um, we'll go ahead and move on. Just, I will note that, um. Allegations made here are not facts and that, um, political contributions are seen under the law, not as quid pro quo. So. With that, then, we will go ahead and move on. Um, to our primary item on our agenda, which is item D, financial planning, which is a report on the annual operating budget of the Anchorage School District for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Mr. Holloman, how would you like to proceed?
Um, we have our resident budget expert sitting right next to me. I'm gonna turn the floor or ask you to turn the floor over to Mr. Ratliff, our CFO.
All right, thank you. Um, for the record, I'm Andy Ralph, Chief Financial Officer for the School District. And then walk through an overview of our 25, 26 preliminary, uh, budget that has been submitted to the city for approval. Um, first, just quickly go over our timeline. Right now, the school board has approved our budget through the meetings in February to turn it into the city the first Monday of March per charter. Um, with you guys having 30 days to approve it from that date. Uh, currently, the legislative is still in session, so we don't know how much money we're actually gonna get. Uh, just as, kind of an aside, that's what happens generally every year. We don't know how much money we're gonna get until after the assemblies approve the budget. For this year, we didn't know how much money we were gonna have until June 28th. Um, so that's kind of where we're at in the timeline. Uh, one of the underlying issues that we're having with this budget is our structural deficit based on a flat funding in the base student allocation. Since, really since 2017 and how much ground we've lost since 2011 to inflation. Uh, this chart shows the base student allocation since 2017. And those blue bars at the bottom and the red line at the top shows what it would have been if it was an inflation, inflation adjusted since 2011. Uh, the gold bars are how much we've used in fund balance. The darker blue bars are what we've spent in esker money to help balance the budget. And then the state one-time in orange. And that's really just to show kind of here's how we've been able to budget, balance the budget in past years without uh, real significant cuts. We have been making cuts every, about every year, um, for the last decade or so. Uh, smaller increments, but you see, kind of see that, that's why is we've had these one-time pots of money to help shore it up. But those are gone. We do have some fund balance to put towards it this year, but certainly not enough to alleviate, uh, 65 or 70 million dollars in real cuts. Uh, this is our appropriate summary that we're, that we're gonna request to the assembly, about 866 million dollars. So it's a reduction of about 28 million dollars from the previous year, about 3%. Uh, most of that comes within the general fund, although there are some add backs for grants as we anticipate getting those. However, uh, that's also in flux now as well as we really, the grant landscape, especially on the federal level, is, um, somewhat unpredictable. So kindly. Uh, how we generate our money is generated through the base student allocation. This is what, um, how the state funds schools and in turn sets the local appropriation maximum. Um, but really what it does, it takes our, our student count, which just are based on our enrollment, rolls it through this formula that applies a district cost factor, which Anchorage is a one. Every other district gets an increase for, uh, cost of living in their district, um, but Anchorage is the base, so there's no increase there. There's a 20% increase on that, uh, ADM count or the average daily membership to, for special needs, including gifted, special education, uh, English language learners and vocational education. Uh, there's a one and a half percent increase on top of that for CTE. And then we get a 13 times multiplier for intensive needs funding and then correspondence funding set at 90% of their student count. Um, there are a couple of bills out there, uh, at the state level that the governor introduced that would change some of these factors. Uh, the CTE app factor would go from one and a half percent to 4%, and then that correspondence would go from, uh, 90% to, um, a 1.0. But then it would also roll through those other multipliers. So the correspondence would increase quite a bit. The CTE would increase a little bit. But still not enough to make up our, our deficit. The rest of that formula rolls through is they take that a district adjusted ADM, so really our student count, um, through all those multipliers gets to about 71,000 adjusted ADM, and that's really what the basis of multiplying the base student allocation is for, for generating revenue. In this case, the base student allocation, still that 5960 that's been there for several years without meaningful adjustment, um, gets to about 424 million of what they call, the state calls basic need, or what a school should need to operate. Uh, from that, they reduce a portion for required local contribution. That's the amount that the city needs to kick in based on statute for, um, the value of the property in the city. Um, and then they also take a reduction for federal impact aid. Uh, they take about half of the federal impact aid money the districts receives from the federal government out of the state allocation. Through a program that's called the disparity test at the federal level that says if you are equalize your payments to districts, then you can reduce a certain amount of federal revenue from the state revenue. I think Alaska is the only state to do that now. Uh, all the other states have stopped that, that practice. Uh, adding the quality schools grant, we get to about 291 million dollars in state money. And then there's an allowable, an additional allowable, uh, amount for local taxes, about 98 million. And that's based on the, uh, 23% of the basic need. And they cap that amount so they can continue to deduct the federal money from our, uh, from our revenue. Um, so that's the only reason that I know of that that the additional amount that municipality can contribute is capped, is so they can continue to reduce that, that federal appropriation. So overall, you can see our, uh, general fund, total budget is going down by about 43 million in our revenue. Um, that coupled with about 20 or 25 million dollars in inflation, inflationary costs on that original budget based on, uh, contracts, utilities, any, you know, cost of everything goes up over time. This is about two or 3% inflation. Um, that gets to about a 65 million dollars in actual cuts that we have to make. So loss of revenue and increase in costs. And you can see the property taxes going up by about 4.7 million. Um, that's due to that required local effort going up. It went up by about seven and a half million. And then we were able to, and then we reduced that by the additional local contribution, which actually goes down, um, as a loss of, generally that's gonna be tied to a loss of enrollment. So as we lose some students, uh, we get less state money and then less we're able to collect that additional allowable. So the net is gonna be about a 4.7 million dollar ask for increased property taxes to support the, our general fund budget. We're gonna use about 40, almost 50 million dollars of our fund balance to shore up our budget. Um, about 13 million dollar increase over the previous year. And that's gonna draw our reserves down to about 6 million dollars, about 1% of our, uh, operating budget and actual spendable reserves. Um, that's not a lot to operate on for a district for our size or any organization this, this size. You can see the foundation funding going down by about 12 million dollars. That's a combination of the required local effort going up by seven and a half million, which is a direct reduction in state money. So it's just a shifting in who pays. While the taxpayers are paying more, the state's paying less, the district doesn't get any more money. Um, so we get that question a lot. Why are my taxes going up? But you guys keep asking for money. And that's really wise. They go up with that required local contribution, but the state takes that money right back away from us, so we're, uh, net zero when that happens. Um, so lose about 12 million dollars in foundation funding. And again, that's a combination of the required local effort going down. And then the enrollment declines, which are tied to our revenue as well. And then the one-time funding goes away, the 49 million. Um, so that's really kind of the components of, we see that 43 million dollar decline in revenue. Any questions as we go along? You can go ahead and. Mr. Domi.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy. Um, what's the actual, uh, dollar amount per student that the district is getting at this point in time from the state formula?
Whatever. Uh, and state revenue for the budget for FY '26, we have 6,972 dollars in, uh, per actual student. Or ADM, not adjusted, but, but average daily membership. It's not necessarily, average daily membership isn't necessarily enrollment. It's generally a few hundred students lower than our enrollment based on like part-time students. But we do use that average daily membership as the, as the basis for that 6,900 dollars. So not materially different if we used actual enrollment. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. Part of my voice. Can you just describe a little better, I just look for the opportunity of public education? The, why we're gonna be asked to increase taxes this year by four point whatever million? Can you describe that again? I have a follow-up question to that.
Yes, I can. Um, and this slide will help kind of walk through that. And this is like history since 2011 of how that's changed. Um, but really, uh, the, the basis of it is the state gives us, lots of this, an amount of money that they say they think we need for education. That's called their basic need. And then from that, they require, uh, a local contribution. Um, and it's 2.65 mils of the full value of the property in the, uh, in the organized borough. So that's about 48 million dollars or 48 billion dollars. Um, so as that goes up, the property values go up over time, just like inflation does. Property values go up. Uh, the required local contribution goes up, and then there's a dollar for, and then the state reduces their contribution by the amount of that required local contribution. So as you see here, this is kind of from 2011 to 16. You can see the property values going up from about 35 billion up to 48 billion. Uh, see that increase there? And then that required local, local contribution has gone up 26 million over that same time period. If you look down to that 19 million dollar reduction in state revenue. So as that 26 million dollars is increased over the years, the state revenue has decreased by that amount as well. So again, it's just kind of a net zero to the district on that. It's just a cost shifting to the Anchorage taxpayers.
Thank you. Sort of follow-up would be. Theoretically, it's possible, although it may not be practically something that has happened. What happens with if and when property taxes, taxes decreased? Or the property values decreased?
Yep, and that's happened like in smaller increments. We see maybe, you know, a few hundred thousand, a million dollars in some years where it stayed flat. In that case, then this, the, it does shift, like so the state would pay more and the city would pay less. Um, so the required local contribution, again, it's tied to 2.65 mils of that property values. Um, and so right now, the city's kicking in 128 million dollars of, uh, local con, required local contributions. The property values go down. That number would drop and the state would pay a little more. But historically, that doesn't.
And this will be my final point on that. So just, just to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, essentially. The state hasn't kept up with the, the, the BSA over time. So the shift has been downward to us. But if we're successful and have a thriving economy and, and values of our properties are improving, we get a shorter-handed stick from the state on that front, too.
Correct. I mean, that's, that's exactly what happens. If our property values go up, the state's gonna pay less. I mean, if they somehow doubled overnight and they're. You know, it's.
And that's in the face of what they're already having kept up with funding in the first.
Yeah, and we have, I have a slide like towards the end of this. It kind of shows the state funding over time just for K-12 education. It shows the going down. Um, even in real dollars. Uh, and that's really because the cost shifting has occurred to, um, districts. Or municipalities, I guess. Yeah, that was kind of the intent to show this slide, to show how that required local contribution's gone up over time. Um, transportation's gone up. It used to be 100% funded by the state. Now this, we're asking the city to put in another 13 million to help shore up our, our bus service. And then the additional local contribution has gone up a little bit. Uh, the formula's changed a little bit since, uh, over time, but not a lot. So we have got a little bit more in additional local contributions. Um, but the state, in terms of real dollars, between 2011 and 2026 is paying 19 million dollars less than now or projected for next year versus what they gave us in FY 11. And these are real dollars. These aren't inflation adjusted. It's their, their contributions have gone down over time. Um, so how we prioritize our budget and how we started to build, uh, this shows. I have a few more people with questions. Your question was answered. Thank you. So, uh, next, Ms. Zalatell, after that, Ms. Brawley.
Thanks. So could the state change its policy about the cost shifting? Is that one of the things it could do?
I don't see why not. I mean, it's a statute that requires it. So all they do is change the statute. They did change it. I forget what year it was, but there used to be a different formula for how that was calculated. It was like 4% of the difference between the current year and 2019, 99 or something weird.
What's, so with the cost shifting, like right, let's just say there wasn't cost shifting and you just got the local contribution maxed out as per state law. And the state doesn't reduce their amount. What's that delta?
Uh, that's the 128 million-ish.
So it would close your deficit?
Yeah.
Oh, hey, look, we've got another solution on the table. Thanks.
Yeah, if that wasn't in there, if we didn't have to pay that, um, but then the city would have. Yeah, then we could, yeah, I don't know how they would actually do it, but it's.
Well, so, I mean, so it could just be a policy choice by the state versus a monetary choice by the state. Right?
Yeah, it would, it would close our deficit to the extent that the Assembly and the city continues to fund the district at that level.
We've never let you down. Thanks.
I know. You guys have been great. I don't know about never, but not in memory. Um. Thank you, Ms. Brawley.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I feel like we're having the same depressing conversation that we have every, uh, every three months when we come here. So I'm sorry that you guys are the front line of that. But, uh, just to be super clear, so I'm looking at the, uh, state foundation revenue. Am I reading this correctly? So like you said, it's not adjusted for inflation. So literally since FY 11. And I moved to the state in 2011, so almost four, 14 years ago, almost 15 years ago. We were getting 19 million dollars more from the state than we are now.
Correct.
Okay, and then.
Projected.
Right.
Or based on what's in statute currently.
Right. Um, and then of course, as we saw, like, like you just said, the formula is that the local contribution has increased as a result of that formula, not really so much a choice on our part.
Right, and part of it's gonna be enrollment declines. Like we have to, I mean, admittedly, we have lost students, so that does affect the state revenue. Uh, but it's a combination of the cost shifting. There have been some increases in the base student allocation since then. And then the enrollment decline. So there's a lot of different factors that go in there. But in terms of real dollars, to keep a similar amount of buildings open, it's gone down.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think, I mean, it seems like around the table, we're just underlining over and over the same problem. And so yeah, I don't know what else to say about it. It just, it is a problem. Thanks.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. All right, so as we kind of get into the meat of how the budget was built, this is really where our money goes. This is what our current FY 20 Right. So as we kind of get into the meat of how the budget was built, this is really where our money goes. This is what our current FY twenty six approved allocation is. I'm kind of starting at the middle. We've broken it down into just four very broad categories. The first being the direct classroom instruction, which is the teachers and paraprofessionals. All the supplies, materials, equipment, services, software that are in the classroom being used every day. About fifty eight percent of our revenue goes in there, three hundred and forty three million. Our next category is biggest is student supports, and those are the ones that are generally at schools or helping schools function, kind of ancillary services, counselors, nurses, librarians. Security, we put student activities in there, sports. Curriculum development behind that, all the behavioral supports. Principals, the clerical staff at the schools, professional development, social services, all these things that's that we have at the schools to help support them. The students are in there, not necessarily directly in the classroom though. Spend about eighty one million dollars in operations and maintenance to keep our student or our schools operational, safe and clean. Then about thirty four million or so on district administration, which is just kind of the business end of operating a government. And that's, you know, me, their school board, superintendent, just all all those business functions. So the table at the bottom shows how that was a portion back in FY twenty five, so our current budget. And then in FY twenty six, and you can see the percentages are about the same. So it's really just showing that we have reduced all these categories from year to year. It's no one is really held harmless in this budget. And we'll go through more details in what was reduced here in a second.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Ms. Brody.
Thanks. I'm curious, not to go deep into this, but you know, we know that the cost of operating buildings has gone up and then we know healthcare is going up at a rate much faster than regular inflation. So I'm just curious. Not to get in the weeds, but of those two categories, is that, how much is that a driver of these cost pressures? Because obviously, if it's a if it's a zero sum game, those things eat up more of the budget. I'm just curious like how much that is part of the, because we don't focus so much on that. We focus on the impacts to operations to teachers, right, which is important. I'm wondering for these other categories.
Yeah, I mean, we're fairly, it's a people intensive business that we run. So with the operations and maintenance, a lot of that money is going to be. I think maybe half of that or so, a little more is probably people. But then we have like, you know, utilities, all those costs are wrapped into there. So. But yeah, you're very, you're absolutely right. That health insurance has been a huge driver. And that's where we see like, you know, when we're talking about our inflationary pressures, maybe three percent. That's trying to hold some levels down and then acknowledging healthcare is going to be more expensive. So that's just kind of the baseline is like, when we're talking about how we have to, how much we have to cut, projecting out from twenty five to twenty six, here's how much all our costs are going to go up. And then to make the reductions. I don't know if that really answers your question very well, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I know it's an issue with every organization. I just. I I just, we don't talk, we don't talk as much as we should, I think, about the cost of health insurance and how it eats into people's wages over time.
Right. And we shifted more of our health insurance costs onto our employees. Our benefits have been reduced over time. That's kind of masks the overall increase in the cost, but it is a cost to our employees for sure. Ms. Higgins.
Question? Thank you. I know that the university did a review of the cost of living issue about salaries and the impact. I mean, Juno has lower cost, lower energy cost than we do now. It shocked me. But the impact is of course, we've got a, we've got a higher cost of living now compared to what ninety nine, we've had other changes take place during this period of time. The amount of salary we are behind cost is is more than what this cost of living data would show. And with eighty five percent of our cost or eighty percent of our cost at least being in personnel. So it impacts, I think you made a very good point. It impacts it significantly, the salary and the benefits. Are both inflationary factors that exceed the the cost of living in general. I believe that's pretty substantial. And that's a great point. Thank you. And that doesn't mention the cost of eggs, so.
All right. So how we balance the budget, the biggest thing was we've increased our people to teacher ratio. Essentially, our class sizes by four at every grade level. This was a tough one to swallow, but that's where the majority of our costs are in the classroom. What that looks like at the schools or other adjustments we're making at the schools is for our elementary schools. Our nurses and librarians have both been reduced to if there's schools smaller than three hundred students. Reduce that to a halftime nurse librarian, eliminated all our library assistants, continued our reduction in supply funds. Eliminated some money for Battle of the Books. Eliminated three addenda at each school. And this is kind of the the addenda at the school levels are really what allows the schools to operate like after school programs, you know, if they want to do a soccer club or addenda for, you know, choir or something, some these kind of things that are activities for students that are kind of above and beyond the normal school day. We eliminated the ignite program for the gifted students and then we closed Lake Hood and Nacca Valley Elementary Schools. At the middle school level, again, with the plus four PTR increase, we also reduced, we reduced some principals and counselors and then eliminated all middle school supports or sports and then reduced the, again, continued with our reduction that happened this year for our supply funds for all those those schools as well. For high schools, we eliminated all our library assistants, some principals, counselors and office admin. Eliminated hockey, swimming and diving and gymnastics. The ice time and pool rentals are really kind of the driver, what makes those those sports pretty expensive. And then we eliminated the lease with the dome for which does help support our track and soccer programs. And then also with the supply funds, they were continued reduction as well. Alternative programs will also see like the middle, a lot of those play the middle school sports, so that'll go away. And then they also the PTR increases for those schools as well as a principal that came out of family partnership that we had would actually reduced this year and the budget's just catching up to it. So those are the big drivers on kind of the schools. To put that in terms of dollars, here's kind of where all the money falls between. What's the people teacher ratio adjustments? We did reduce seventy teachers just based on enrollment. We lost over a thousand kids. This year from what we had actually planned. Expecting to lose a few hundred more kids next year. So enrollment does continue to decline as birth rates and Anchorage decline and the net out migration. Program based teachers, this is the immersion programs at elementary schools by and large. So we had an extra twelve staff or so at our our elementary immersion programs to help support class sizes in those outside of that PTR metric. So those came out. There was a, there was a change at Gerdwood where we needed to shore up their middle school programs. That's the other three. We reduced our number of holdback teachers, which is really our ability to plug gaps in secondary schedules. Or if you have class size bubbles in elementary, you weren't expecting those holdback teachers really allow us to place an extra staff member to alleviate class sizes or help with scheduling. But again, we're just principals, counselors, librarians, nurses, some clerical staff. Some of these are due to the the school closures. So like the clerical staff, you see five being reduced there, four of those were at those elementary schools that were closed. And then we reduced the number of other just kind of things that weren't staffing related to include the service supplies, equipment, sports. Just kind of all across the board, really went line by line through this budget and reduced as much as we possibly could to get to a balanced budget. We in we reduced special services. So special education got reduced this year for the first time in as long as I can remember. I think probably when Dr. Browder was here was the last time that actually got reduced. So it's been a good decade. By and large, the teachers coming out of here are with the ignite program. But there are some in way their staff in Whaley Elementary Ed, those positions going down. So that's really, we can see about five and a half million dollars of reduced costs in our special services. Our departments and administration were taking yet another staff out of our accounting department, transferring some purchasing staff, human resources, IT, mental health, teaching and learning. All these kind of ed center based programs or departments are being reduced to the tune of about eight point nine million. That also includes. We've all made a list. It's a reduction also in like legal fees, any sort of travel, food purchases, software, equipment. Major maintenance contracts, capital equipment, advertising, any sort of extra help we have, professional development. Really, again, we went line by line through all these departments and cut as much stuff as we we could out of there and still be able to function. So that's our general fund reductions for transportation. We're really kind of limited in what we can reduce there without stop. Real quick, we did have someone in the queue on that last slide.
Thank you. So what caught my ear is special education. Did you guys audit the services? I mean, these kids are supposed to get individualized education plans. It doesn't really matter what your budget can and can't do. And so to see things like clerical is fine. I mean, that's just going to push it on the teachers and that's going to stink, right, for those case managers. But you've got the educational interpreters. I presume that's from the Alaska School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. We've been there before. And the paraprofessionals, are we going to meet the needs of the kids or are we going to be back in a position like we've been before where ASD says, I'm sorry, I know your kid really needs that, but we're not going to provide it because we can't afford it. Like, because then it's going to drive up your legal costs. So I feel like we are, I mean, and it's, you are in an impossible position. But it's very short sighted to be making these decisions on the backs of the children. And I think especially education, especially, you have an obligation to make sure these are individualized plans. So I would like to know what auditing or what substantive evaluation was done to determine that these won't impact the actual kids' IEPs and the ability of more kids to get the services they need as based on their actual needs, not what the district can afford.
Right. Thank you. I'm probably not the most qualified to speak to actual the academic services being provided, like count the money. But unfortunately, we don't have someone here to really speak to the details of that. But I can say a lot of those, like the educational interpreters, that's cool. Those have been vacant for years. We did rekindle that budget and make sure that those were weren't positions that were going to be. Students aren't going to lose services on those. The teachers, I believe they're reevaluating their resource programs at elementary schools. But again, I'm not.
Who's the special ed director?
Pam Momoney and Parisha Wayne are special ed directors. And then Sven would be good to speak to it too, but those folks aren't here today.
Okay.
We can get, definitely follow up and get some more.
I'll send an email.
Chair Holman, did you want to speak to that point?
I did just as someone that spent a few years in schools. This, this has been a long running program or problem. Particularly with sped because at times the IEP team creates requirements that that we can't meet. And to be honest, I'm I'm not sure, but I think your idea of an audit of the IEPs as to what is being requested required and what is actually being delivered would be a good one. Of course, audits cost some money. That is something that we would normally turn to the Council of Great City Schools. They deploy teams basically at cost for transportation and lodging from people from different districts that have expertise. And we've used them in other areas, but that that could be very telling. You know, like it's very common for an IP to specify an aide to be with a student. And then there simply aren't any. Unless we significantly raise, raise, raise wages for those folks and we have not in quite some time. So it is a a really valid question and an open issue.
And the reason I ask it is when your pupil teacher ratio goes up and you have kids you are trying to integrate who have special needs, they're probably going to need more support in larger classrooms. And it will come back and be hard for the district if parents are dissatisfied that their child, their children's needs aren't being met. So there's a cost one way or the other. And I think that that's important to realize. There was a time when there was substantial litigation against the school district around special education services. I think that time has passed to some extent. I would prefer not to see it go back to that because it really damages relationships. So being thoughtful about that upfront and possibly figuring out, you know, that kind of audit or even just maybe not, doesn't have to be quite that specific. But at least a look to see what are kids, what are the majority of kids needing? What are they needing to succeed? Or what is it, what is required? I mean, it's not even needing. What is required in their IEPs and is the budget designed in a way to deliver it? Could save the district a headache later. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jacobs. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the concern and it's it's something that that I share as a therapeutic foster parent who who cares for youth who receive IEP five oh four services. I think what administration highlighted a number of times during the budget process is that this is their best proposal to comply with law and utilize the resources in the the best way possible. But to be clear, this path and this adopted budget that we're on isn't sustainable. We cannot continue to pretend that there are efficiencies and cuts that will mitigate, fully mitigate the impact of legislative inaction. And so it's something I know I'll be monitoring while we also continue to advocate for appropriate resources.
Yeah, I I recall the legal action because I was at Northville at that time and we were dealing with the same issue and I was having to deal with it. But the the opportunity to bypass the obligations doesn't exist for financial reasons. You have to meet what you have to meet. And and I know that that becomes a huge issue. I think you're absolutely right. We don't have any flexibility on that. We have flexibility when it comes to negotiating though the IEP. And that's an obligation, that's an issue that's out there that we can always do. But once you've reached that, then you got the issues. We had the issues seclusion and other issues that were out there in the school district as well as but Northville and other other facilities. And if we have to raise it to five, we raised the classroom sizes by five, but I don't see how you avoid that. I will share with you though that we are doing audits of operations and one of those that's listed out there that we've talked about is in special ed. I know we have support from the superintendent in doing that, in doing a review. That brings in top people from other large school districts to come in, review what we're doing, see what we can do to improve it and make sure that we're meeting compliance. And I like that type of approach and I appreciate the superintendent's support for the board to direct that kind of audit.
All right, anyone else on this question? Ms. Brody.
Yeah, I wanted a slightly different topic, although I see it says sped. I wanted to ask about the mental health cut and I'm not. I know why all these cuts are being made. So setting that aside, I'm wondering, because we, you know, we keep hearing mental health is a huge issue. Behavior issues, suicide ideation, right, all of these issues with our kids younger and younger. So I'm just wondering. Because I see there's six positions being eliminated. So what what is that as a share of the whole mental health department, I guess? Is that, I'm assuming that's not all the staff. And I know these kinds of issues also then fall on teachers and others, but I'm just curious kind of what what that looks like. Specifically, how much of a cut is that five hundred seven thousand dollars in six positions?
Sure, that's a great question. And it's really only five positions. One of those positions is moving over to the special ed because that's where the work was being done. We're just trying to get in the right function code. So currently in this year's budget, they have like they have twenty two point three FTE in mental health. That'll go down to fifteen point three for next year.
And and sorry, that's for every school or sorry, it's for entire district.
Well, there's other mental health professionals in the districts. We have a psychology department. That wouldn't be included in here. All the counselors that we have that are a school based, that's not included in here. This is just the ones that are kind of managed by a central department here and then pushed out to schools as needed. The positions that are being reduced here, the behavior positions have been vacant for a couple of years as well. So they're not currently filled positions.
Thanks. And then just a quick follow up too. I mean, I know there's community organizations out there that also provide these services. I know there was a change recently to allow billing Medicaid for more services. I guess, has there been discussion about other opportunities to increase those services in schools? And I know it's something that you guys have been working on, right? But I'm just curious where that's at. And whether it needs, because if it's cut out of the school district budget, it's obviously still a need. So is there a way to fill it with other, you know, other entities?
Mr. Chair, if I could answer this.
Please.
Yeah. So this is a great question. Remember, Brian, when I asked at a recent school board committee meeting, what I think I understand about the state process is they're currently laying the groundwork for how districts in in our state can begin utilizing that billing process. But that framework, to the best of my knowledge, hasn't been established yet, but it's very close. As soon as we can begin turning on that spigot, I intend to push administration to do that. They added a position to assist in that billing work, which will drive additional revenue and provide the district additional funds that I would like to. and provide the district additional funds that I would like to, to utilize them in a fundable way to continue to support this work. So as to not divert funds from our primary source of revenue, the state dollars through the foundation formula.
But just note that even that is in question now, the potential of Medicaid services. Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask a question about the vacant positions. You described that at least on two occasions in the last couple of minutes, that there were positions that had not been filled essentially that are being eliminated now. When the municipality was looking at our positions, to some extent, there had been similar challenges with keeping positions on the budget with the hope of recruiting for those positions. Can you describe that, those recruiting efforts? How would the district project recruiting efforts in a time of clawback? So essentially, are we holding on to positions for too long? And is the right sizing conversation only in a uh, reactive nature rather than proactive? Are there more positions that we will not be able to fill? There's, we know that the, 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 the rope is short. There's no other resources coming. You know, usually it's a stack of things that build up to be able to have things hit the classroom, the schools over time to sustain positions in the first place often, right? So can you get it? Can you give me a little more sense of the way we look at vacancies and when we have vacancies on the book? Are they actively recruiting for those jobs?
Oh yeah, that's a great question. And it can, and it'll go back to guess the type of position, like the ones in our central office. Well, we've been holding all those, any vacancy that comes up and holding it for at least 10 days before we post it. And we've been trying to review those to make sure there's need. And that's where we found some of the reductions as we're trying to replace those is, okay, you've gone a long time without having that fully staffed. Can we reduce it? But the bigger ones, like most, a lot of ours are in the special education department, you know, so OTPT, speech psychologist. Those positions are hard to find nationwide. While we've been recruiting nationwide, it's really hard to fill, but we need to provide those services somehow. Sometimes we take that money and backfill it with contractors. Or in the case of like teachers, we'll do it with long-term subs or something, but we still want to try to recruit those certified personnel.
So I'm going to, I'm just going to speed it up just to, to, to the point that members all tell me before, every bucket is not the same. So the buckets that have legal requirements, I'm not interested in, in those because they're not as subjective as some of the other buckets that may have subjectivity in terms of holding on to them without a projected opportunity. Like, have we been holding on to positions? And you may not have the answer for it, but that we know to activate those positions thoroughly would require the state to do more, for example. So then essentially we're sandbagging the budget a little bit to just hold space. Okay, but there are different buckets with legally required to do that. And then we're all leaning up and how long does it? Maybe we, we could get to lean faster so we can get to how we can improve our ability to, to withstand the state cuts better. Right? Because if we have dollars on the books that are not going to be filled with positions, I don't want it like that. I'd rather those dollars be get, get shifted into the other positions and to the other areas much faster. And maybe it's not a big number there, but it seems that at least on a few occasions, it's been identified as there have been positions on the books that are essentially connected to budgets that are now being cut. But we could get better faster rather than being so reactive in that way.
Yeah, and really the, the way that we do our budget is in regards to that attrition and vacancy. Because we know we're going to have a certain amount of positions open throughout the year. We've estimated that about 40 million, $41 million in savings for next year of having either turnover vacancies or people waiving medical insurance. So we do make a reduction in our budget. We say, okay, we're going to gamble that $41 million is going to be saved through the course of this budget. And we're going to put that in other areas. So to some extent, we already do that. And it's not where we're going through, like, we want this position that's like an IT position. It's been vacant or turns over a lot. Should we cut that and then just reduce that attrition line item? So it's kind of, we do try to account for it. And then we do go look at those positions to make sure the need to have them open is there. Because a lot of these that we show, I mean, they just like rotate. It's not necessarily vacant all year. It's we'll have someone in there for two or three months. They leave someone two or three months and probably gets back to your comment about does the state need to be, to be able to do more so we can provide the wage increases to get the appropriate professionals in our, in our company?
All right, Ms. Wilson.
I, I was hoping we could talk or you could talk a little bit specifically about the nurses. Because, and how our schools are going to be affected by cutting 15 nursing physicians.
Yeah, great question. Again, I'm not the academic expert by any means on this, but you know, it will have a negative effect on those. 30 schools or so that have those nurses coming out. You'd end up probably having nurses shared between schools. So halftime at one school, halftime at another, maybe they're splitting days. But if there's an inventive emergency, you know, that's generally the person that they call. Uh, the nurses also probably provide a considerable amount of like mental health support, you know, there's, that's just another person in the building to talk to. Give teachers bathroom breaks. I mean, there's a number of things that these positions do, even if they're not like in a classroom full time and it's going to have a negative effect on our schools. But the actual, the actual programmatic part of it, it's, I'm not quite as versed in.
Mr. Higgins.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the question because we have some quite, some positions that are filled with a visa. We have France providing teachers. We have Spain with their two-year rotation. So we to, to delay that or interfere with that would be a problem. That was brought up at the school board meeting superintendent and the response for that was they're proceeding forth with that. They don't have to get to the point of approval at this point. But they need to go through the process going in and not holding back on that. Otherwise that would impact the immersion programs pretty significantly. And that was what my concern was. We have about 50 long-term subs now. So we, and I heard from AEA that they're looking at a turnover of about 350, again, a high number. We've got, we are, we are fighting to fill the positions we've got right now, uh, which we're not being totally successful. So the opportunity with turnover and other issues with it. We're like anything else in the state of Alaska. We don't have enough applicants for the positions in all of our areas. Um, we've got six, I think, schools that do not have the lunches because we can't get the managers in there. So we have got, you've got a serious crisis and, and salaries on issue. No defined benefit is an issue that causes the turnover higher. So the first five years when we have higher turnover, that's when the growth of the teacher skills improve in any profession. And so we have a higher turnover right there. And the superintendent talked about that at the chamber and said, you know, we're trying to achieve these academic things, but that's going to be a serious impact. And I agree with his assessment at that point in time. So we're not, we're not, recruiting is, is not, I don't think being delayed at all. Uh, we don't make the offers till later anyway, because we don't know how many positions are going and people will be interviewing and making a selection. Uh, so I don't think they're, they're slowing down at all the recruiting aspect. It's just finding the applicants, the salary, the benefits and the turnover is, is a real killer force. And the, the timing was most serious for me was for the J1 visa. Those visas are pretty easy. But you still have to put them in process to make sure they're timely. Otherwise it's going to impact those immersion programs. I think the, the, um, the two that stand out are the French and Spanish, and then we've got the Chinese. So, um, we're, I, I think that HR is doing what it needs to do in the recruitment aspect of it. The turnover is something being caused by all the other factors that we're talking about. And so I don't think that we're slowing down the process. We just simply need to somehow force people up here. Involuntarily if necessary, uh, to fill the positions necessarily. It's a real crisis that we've got.
I have myself in the queue. Just briefly, there's a conversation going on about getting lean faster. That term really struck a chord in my head. I think we experience a term that I just found out I'm not the originator of financial or budgetary or monetary dysmorphia. Our perception of our financial position, if people believe we have a lot of room to get lean is like we have a form of dysmorphia. There isn't, in my read of all of these things, a lot of room to lean out this budget. And in fact, the leanness of this budget is starting to suggest illness. It's starting to ju- suggest sickness, right? When someone gets so lean that they start to be skin and bones, people start to ask what is going on. And so I just want us to be really clear. We're not here talking about a fat budget that needs to get lean in the context of dysmorphia. We're talking about a very lean budget that has been leaned out for the last 10 years that is getting to the point of critical. And so that I want to make sure is held in mind in this conversation. Back to the slide presentation. Mr. Holman.
Yeah. Um, I was going to speak to, to what Mr. Martinez was saying. I, I think what I heard you saying is we may have positions we don't really intend to fill in the budget as kind of a, a protective layer. And to my knowledge, that doesn't exist. We have a lot of unfilled positions and they act that way. Uh, that's been the thing that's recharged our fund balance through the year. We, we start off, you know, like in this case, we're going to start off with a 5% fund balance, which really is dangerously low. But assuming we have the same success rate in recruiting people, that number is going to rise as we get into the school year. If we're unable to hire people. And so that's been happening. And I, I think that when they did this budget, and again, correct me if I misinterpreted this, we didn't look at positions that had been vacant for quite a while to cut those so that we didn't lay off anyone we actually had working in the district because a certain percentage of them will not come back. I've seen the recruiting fairs lately. They're anemic. They're anemic here, they're anemic other places. There aren't very many candidates even showing up. Um, I did stop by the one at the Cook that the state used to hold, or maybe they still hold it um, in 1993. And there were literally thousands of people that had flung themselves up here to stand in line and hope for a chance to work in Alaska as an educator. And, and they're just not there anymore. So I, I think we have these positions open because at any moment someone walks through the door and it happens all through the school year. We want principals to be able to interview, hire and place people. But yeah, some of those positions may have been used so that we didn't lay anybody off in the, the process.
Right. And I think within some of these positions that we did reduce, there are people in those and they may get pink slips, particularly our non-certified folks. We, you know, we'll try to find a place for them though. Of course, we do have vacancies. We can move them around, but if those positions are going away, then we have to find something to do with them. Uh, with respect to gaining the fund balance like this year, we have, we
Sliding on, sorry, Mr. Martinez was hoping to speak before you proceeded.
Yeah, just to continue on that point. Uh, the one thing that I don't think has been mentioned is the positions that are on the books are connected to a need.
Yes.
You needed to say that extremely clear guys. Right? So that the opportunity for the public to understand is not just in a, in a rhetorical way. Right? These are things that student needs are being kept from being met for myriad reasons. And this particular one is from my vantage point looking at the vacancy question and recognizing that we are extremely lean and I really appreciate like you could get so lean, you know, I've lost some weight healthily and people are like, what's wrong with you? Right? And I'm like, I'm doing better than you. So, you know, like, come jog with me or something, right? But, but the first impulse is to think what's going on. Um, so I wanted to be real clear because I don't think it was mentioned and I was hoping that it would be. Carl mentioned it to me, he's made sure that he understood what my point was, which is even the, the vacancies on the books are connected to a student need somewhere. Full stop.
Yeah, we certainly don't have any positions in there. We don't intend to fill, but on our side, we do make that.
Yeah, but even beyond that, if you intended to fill them, but they had no connection to need, you don't have those jobs on the books.
Certainly, there's a need for.
Okay, so they're all connected to need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holman, last note on this one and we'll move on. Go ahead.
And, and I think something is very apparent to those of us that have worked in the district and, and you may be right to people outside, it may not be as clear. But it's, it's an indication to me how uncompetitive we are. And I, I kind of object to us using the word recruit. At, at a different time in life, I used to work for the University of North Carolina Athletic Association. I know what they mean when they say recruit. And they show up in a beautiful van with credit cards to great restaurants and we've never recruited teachers like that. We do sign contracts with them. Yeah. But, um, but yeah, the, I, I think those vacant positions are, are like a, a warning flag that even doing what you're doing, you're not able to, to attract people to work in this industry any longer. And it is a sign of ill health. Whether the budget gets met or not.
And I think really we're not trying to recruit, we're trying to stop the bleeding. That's where we are at this point. I want to proceed.
Those are general fund, uh, for our transportation fund. Uh, we'll have our, we are requesting another nearly four or 3.9 million dollars in property taxes to shore up our transportation. Um, our costs continue to escalate with those. Our underlying state revenue has not changed since 2016, the per student amount. However, the state mandated starting wage for drivers has increased 33% uh, based on the we have to pay our bus drivers two times minimum wage. That's in statute. So that minimum wage will have increased 33% between 2006, 2016 and 2026. Um, so our costs are mandated to go up. However, the revenue to pay for those is not. So we've been reliant on the city to help shore that up. Uh, thankfully, again, the city, you guys for helping to do that, but, um, again, it's just more pressure put on the Anchorage taxpayers or it's really hard to reduce these services. Even as we, you know, have fewer kids, we're not all in one neighborhood. So we can't really reduce the number of buses and still get kids to school on time.
Before we move on, there's two of us, I have myself in the queue. Um, I think there was some discussion about this earlier. This transportation cost shift. What analysis has been done on the risk of us as a group falling or kind of falling outside of the maximum allowed local contribution because of that policy that the state has kind of chewed back and forth on? So if we do this, are we at risk of loss based on that state policy?
Um, that's a great question. My understanding from deed at this point is they will make a recommendation to the state board who will, they determine the ARs that, that govern this policy. Um, which I guess to back up is within that additional allowable contribution that the city can give districts. Um, historically, we've taken the approach that transportation is outside of that. Uh, the conversation is what should be included within that additional level? So there's not a disparity between how much local communities can fund individual districts. My understanding is deed is going to make a recommendation to the state board to have transportation be within that additional level. So additional, what it says is you're not going to be able to put in that extra 13 more million to shore up busing. It's going to have to come from some other source. You're going to have to make cuts elsewhere to do it. Unless there's an increase in state revenue, which would actually increase that allowable contribution. Um, but that would go into effect for FY27 as I understand it, or that would be deed's request to the state board is to have it to go into effect for not next year, but the year after, given this time to make that adjustment. But my understanding is it's not 100% up to deed to make that call. That's up to the state board. So when they get it, they could conceivably enact it immediately and we would have a $13 million problem.
So in some ways, this is a gamble.
Yes.
Okay. And I think an irrational argument could be made that there are a few other districts that have the same geographic concerns that our transportation is unique because the number of trips. Some of them have airplanes, which is a different thing. But, um, there are probably arguments to be made, but I want folks to recognize that's a gamble that is embedded in this budget because that's what it looks like to me.
Right. And speaking with D, they had, they absolutely have no intent of doing anything other than recommending it for another to be not into effect this coming year with the year after. Uh, but again, it, you know, it's up to the board and not deed at that point.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Donlin.
Yeah. In examining the statute, that's the basis for the funding we get, which hasn't been updated since 2016. It seemed to me that it was, last time it was renewed, it was not. It seemed to me that it was, last time it was renewed, it was not subject to any data or logical analysis. It was just percentages increase. So this thing's really old, really out of date. Um, and I think Anchorage is badly discriminated against in that, those dollar amounts that are stuck, actually dollar amounts per district, separate dollar amounts. And it's another thing that we desperately need a new analysis of to see if we're being treated fairly, which I don't believe we are in that statute.
Right, and our costs have just continued to escalate so fast in our transportation just to get our, just to hire the drivers. Remember a few years ago, when a third of our routes weren't running? Yeah, so kind of the history on that is early teens, they, the state used to have this a hundred percent reimbursable. And they changed it to a per student amount based on what the costs were at that time, and then they added some inflation proving up through FY sixteen. But since then, it really hasn't. So FY sixteen, state hundred percent covered it, but then inflation's been eating away of it for the last decade. Um, but yeah, per student base, and as our students go down, it's it's been increasingly difficult. We did get some one-time funds for this year for transportation, but again, that's going away for next year. It's just the nature of one time.
All right, I think we can proceed.
All right, uh, for debt service is the other one that has property taxes attached to it that we want to discuss. Um, we're reducing our property tax appropriation request by about five point two million for debt, just based on the bonds we expect to have to pay off in that timeframe. Uh, we do have a little bit of fund balance in that that we can apply to help offset those property taxes. Our fund balance is generally, in this fund, is generally generated by uh, if we refund or refinance a bond, get a lower interest rate, we have some savings during that year. Um, or if we estimate a bond sale and the bond sale comes in a little bit lower. So this is generally accumulated over several years and then we'll say, okay, we have, this year we have three and a half million, we think we can put towards uh just alleviating additional property taxes. So we did that, uh, our payments are going down by about seven point three million overall to about forty-seven million total. I'm sorry, change in local taxes from twenty-five to twenty-six, we're requesting about three point four million dollars in additional local support on our fiscal year. Again, that's in, based on the required local contribution going up, uh, production and the additional allowable contribution, and then transportation going up, debt service going down. Um, overall, our, from a calendar year, it'll be about a point seven three percent increase, about one point nine million dollars. Um, so this is the request that's in front of the board or in front of the assembly for uh two weeks. Um, we are requesting as much as we can through the local tax cap. We do calculate that out um separately as a district. I know the overarching tax cap for the city is just one, one number. Uh, but if we were to do it just for the district, here's how I'd kind of math out. So we're taking up um as much as we can based on this to uh for the the city tax gap because we're beholden to the lower of the city or the state caps on uh dollars we can receive. Um, so really, our key takeaways here is we balanced our budget based on our known revenues. There's no projection for increased state revenue in here. Uh, our class sizes are gonna increase, our supports are gonna be diminished at all our schools. Uh, sports and special programs are going away. Um, our administrative and maintenance services are gonna be diminished. We're reducing our ability to respond to uh building problems we have or, you know, anything else that comes up. We're not gonna have that flexibility in our fund balance to cover emergencies. Uh, less flexibility for even enrollment changes. We see a more significant decline in enrollment again this year than we're projecting, then that means less dollars and we have to cover that somewhere. Um, so we're just increasing our risk in our district, you know, our our reserves are gonna be away. We're not gonna have those holdback positions to shore up classroom bubbles. Um, but the legislature is in session, hopefully we get some good movement out of there. I know they've had a lot of conversations, it's been a big focus of the legislature. And really, hopefully, they can come to an agreement to fund education appropriately and we can add some of these positions back or our class sizes. Um, with that, I did want to discuss one other thing, which would be the amendment that was made to the twenty-six budget by members, uh, Jacobs and Lessons.
Two questions for you, Ms. Alatol.
So it's a bit of a comment, but the budget process lines up with the lottery process. And this year, as a parent trying to engage in the lottery, it was nearly impossible. What am I lotterying for? Because your budget decision is made as the lottery closes. And what I didn't see, I'll tell you, and this is a little bit my own bias because I'm about to have a high schooler, is any information about what the impacts in high school would be about your budget cuts. I heard a lot about middle school sports, I heard a lot about nurses, I heard a lot about charter schools and immersion programs. I had no clue what it was gonna be in high school. And I didn't know if your proposed student, your pupil teacher ratio, PTR means something else in another part of my world, I haven't heard time about that one, your PTR was going to apply to the lottery programs. And so it is really hard to make a choice, and I think a lot of parents are stuck in having made a choice or put in for an option. And then now, when those lottery results will come out, they are going to be faced with different programs than what they sought. And so it's it's a timing issue, and I know you guys are in a tough spot with that. But I think it's a communication issue as well. Um, so I wanted to provide that feedback, having kind of just went through it. Um, because it's hard. Also, again, no communication, like, all of this is fine, but about what happens in high schools. All I heard about were middle and elementary schools, and I don't know why. So I, there's some feedback, it's tough. Um, so on that list, there's just this, one of the things, one of the key takeaways that I wish was on there is parent uncertainty to make choices about their child's education. Because this isn't just happened in the district buildings, this happens within our community around people trying to make choices in a set of bad circumstances. It's not just you all having to make choices, it's the parents and the children. And I I feel like we had a disconnect this year.
Thank you, Mr. Salt.
Thank you, Chair, I'll be quick. So just two comments, kind of a question. Um, one is around the process, hopefully that you, you know, ask all departments to get involved. And the way you probably do this in the business world is, you know, we have the five percent cut. Everyone gets that challenge and hopefully it goes all the way down to the classrooms that they are able to participate in this process and provide feedback because they may see waste at the front line that you're not seeing at an administrative level. Um, I also want to make sure that during this process, as you look to optimize budgets, that underserved or under vocalized communities don't take on a disproportionate share of the cuts, which can happen, um, since they have less time maybe to come in and speak or less familiar with how to speak and make their voices heard. Uh, we definitely want to make sure that we're continuing to serve the those that need the services the most. And the last is, I, this is my request, I know you do benchmarking, we've talked about in the past. What I'd like to see is, is how you track your budget towards dollars that are physically spent in the classroom. You know, whether that's teacher salaries or resources for the for the classroom. Not broken down by, on a per student basis, but really, that's where we want to see those dollars spent is in that classroom and and on those students, and I'd like to see a metric in that, in that reference, if you could. Thank you.
That's great, and we do track that through like, um, if you look at our state functions and our budget, state function one hundred is direct classroom instruction. They function two hundred is direct classroom instruction for special education. And we provide the history on those, so we can track, you know, how much we are spending in those areas. Um, try to simplify that a little bit because a lot of people don't understand the state functions. Um, so this slide you show up, that shows up here is really the the simplest version we show of it, where it shows direct classroom instruction. Um, and this is actually based on an amendment that, um, I can even let uh a member Jacobs or Lessons speak to if they want. But we wanted to highlight this amendment as it comes up in the event that we get a hu- a thousand dollar BSA increase.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the board, um, when we adopted our budget, did so for at least the first time, best of my knowledge since I joined the body, without amending administration's proposal. Um, in part, I'll only speak for myself to avoid pitting uh one program against another uh in in part due to the representation concerns that uh Member Salt alluded to. Uh, what we did do uh at the request um on legislative floor sessions, I'm on radio, through radio interviews, um, through op-eds, um, through social media posts, um, is be responsive to uh members of the Anchorage delegation specifically to express a vision for how a permanent increase to the base student allocation would be effectuated specifically to funnel resources directly into the classroom. And so uh Mr. Ratliff um was very generous with his time and support to provide um a metric that we're showing on the screen now, which highlights that uh over sixty-one percent of our budget uh would uh effectively be utilized for direct um classroom instruction with with much more um additional support um through other categories like uh student um supports and operations and maintenance with um a, all but a very small percentage of our budget going to administration, which I think puts us very competitively as one of the lowest percentage um districts in the state. I think right now, we're third or fourth um with our FY twenty-five budget. And um the proposal that a member Lessons and I drafted and the board unanimously approved would reverse many of the harmful cuts um that had to be implemented as part of this budget process, um, reduce the, uh, reverse the uh plus four people teacher ratio increase, restore value programs like ignite language immersion, um, high school sports and middle school sports, um, return our librarians to full-time status and nurses to the same, uh, battle of the books, et cetera. And then also make um additional investments, which uh the legislature's called for specifically, would reduce class sizes to some of the lowest we've seen since two thousand sixteen. Uh, in addition, it would um invest millions in a high dose tutoring uh to support um reading and math, uh, which is a priority for um our appropriators at the legislative level who are who who are, for understandable reasons, hyper-focused on standardized testing outcomes. Um, and so it really is a vision for um how the legislature can help drive the outcomes that they so desperately uh join us in wanting to to see become a reality. Um, with that said, um, you know, certainly, the the amendment is public record. We can definitely get a copy for the assembly uh to review and ask any questions. Um, to speak to the budget process, the assembly will undergo shortly. I just want to say that there is a unique opportunity to get creative and joining us with advocacy. And the assembly's been amazing and a constant supporter um during my time on the board, and I'm extremely grateful. Um, and and the mayor's joined us um in in join in in that advocacy, and so I'm grateful to Mayor LaFrance as well. Um, when you choose to adopt and vote on our budget um at your next meeting, you could choose to uh move to amend our upper limit spending authority uh in line with what is proposed and envisioned here uh with this amendment and increase that by a thousand dollars, uh, effect- effectively a thousand dollar BSA increase. Um, that wouldn't have any practical impacts on the municipal budget, as I understand it. And I've verified that with uh Mr. Ratliff. Um, but it would, um, if paired potentially with an assembly information memorandum, um, which attached this amendment, um, send a strong message that the assembly's vision for what we should be funding aligns with the school boards and the communities. And so um getting creative in that way would allow um joint advocacy, one channel of communication, but then also practically speaking, um, save some administration administrative time once House Bill sixty-nine passes, um, which is my expectation and my demand of my elected officials. Um, we wouldn't have to go back to seek an amended uh budget and upper limit spending authority. And so I want to throw that out there as an option for the assembly to consider as you take up our budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the amendment as well.
I just offer that someone ought to communicate that in a structured way to the assembly in writing so that, yeah, if such a move were to be made, um, information is enhanced sooner than later.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to do that, I wanted to introduce the concept here first.
Last minute work won't be very good, but if you get it to us soon, it might be possible. Uh, Mr. Holman.
Um, I did want to speak to Mr. Salty's uh comment. And one of the things that makes it very difficult is where you draw a line on what is directly in the classroom. And and what's not. And some things clearly aren't. I mean, the the people that work in this building, for the most part, aren't interacting with students. But they do things like payroll and purchasing and whatnot that are essential functions of keeping the whole district going. Um, in addition, you know, like bus drivers fall under administration or overhead. Um, and we could use a couple more of them to to ease some times and whatnot. And yet they do directly interact with kids and and they are important that way. Cafeteria staff, office staff. Um, there's always some debate about whether or not we need assistant principals. Uh, but again, as someone that's walked through the office of schools on a bad day and you see every single adult in the office talking to a student, uh, it's not because people are taking a break, it's because there's been like a fight or something major that suddenly occupies every adult in the building that is not in front of thirty other kids or whatnot. So the the dividing line of what really helps direct instruction in the classroom um and what's administrative is pretty fuzzy at times. And uh, I'll I'll say again, as a classroom teacher, if there's nowhere to send a student that's blowing your classroom up, you have to simply keep dealing with them until they do something you can call the police about. Just what we never want to do, if we can avoid that. So I I do hope people will, or I wish people would have some latitude on it. And and I will admit, a lot of teachers get tight about it too. They they look at people in the office and feel like they've got wonderful, marvelous jobs that are never very difficult. That's not really true, but but you, on a bad day, it looks true. But um, so many people in our buildings are working with kids and are a key part of it, even if they're not actually teaching a class. I just think we always need to keep that in mind.
I would offer that um I have had some very heated and passionate exchanges with hockey parents who assert that hockey-playing teams are classrooms too. And and I think it's not without reason to think that, and so it is a fuzzy kind of part of the conversation. Uh, we have about ten minutes left because we do have a couple more items on the agenda. So uh, let's just put that bound on time so we can make sure we get through everything.
Thank you, finish up really quick then. This slide was just to uh articulate the detail that went into the amendment made by Member Jacobs and Lessons to show just what levels or what things would be added back with that seventy-one million. Uh, we have a copy of that, and then if we do propose some language to you, this will be included too. Uh, wanted to come back to this, you know, again, just to highlight our underlying problem, have that BSA not being increased over years. And then my last slide is um just to show, to highlight the difference between how the state has budgeted for what state departments versus K twelve support to education. You'll see deed, uh, the lines to highlight there, the deed operations, that's the total money that goes to deed. And then in the grayed out portion is how it's broken out between either K twelve support for districts or other deed operations. Um, and it really just highlights the fact that the state has applied inflationary drivers to nearly every other department in that they budget and not K twelve education over that same time period. And since you gave me a microphone and a slideshow, I'm gonna keep continuing to throw this slide up there to highlight those inequities that have been um put to K twelve education to help balance the state's budget. That was it.
All right, I miss probably.
Thanks, yeah, I appreciate the overview, and I'm also certainly interested in um your your guys' recommendations, how we uh deal with the budget that we're gonna get from, whether we have from you guys that we're gonna be taking up in a couple weeks. Um, I guess the the observation I want to make is because it feels like, again, we're in this conversation, we've, we we know, we've all been here for years, right? Um, it just feels like there's so much of the attention is on efficiency and I and I want to unpack the assumption behind that, which is that there's marginal efficiency improvements that can be made. And that is what's holding back our outcomes, or that is what will improve our outcomes. I think really what's at stake in the state, and I I know where I sit on this, I think I know where most of the folks sit in this, in the room on this, is is it the government's job or is it valuable in society for our resources to pay for educating other people's kids? That's what public education is. It is not just my own children, it is everybody's children. And there's an economic implication there, there's a social implication there, there is a civic implication there. And I and I say that not because I believe that the school district is on the wrong side of that. I think, you know, we are sitting here talking about public education, I am a product of public education, a hundred percent. Um, but that's what I keep struggling with, is is we're talking about numbers and we keep trying to have this conversation about numbers. And really, what is at stake and what some people in the state believe is that it is not worth funding public education to educate other people's kids, that's what it feels like to me. So I just wanted to put that on the record, I know that's much that is the bottom line, and at some point, I feel like we have to actually call that out and talk about it directly. Um, and again, not because the folks in this room are what I believe are on the wrong side of that conversation, but it is real. Um, so, sorry, just wanted to say that, thank you.
Other members on this item. So, I don't see, and I'll just end by um putting some cabin around the assembly's actions. Um, this is probably the most prescriptive vote that the assembly has in all of our votes that we take. The the code provides that the budget shall be transmitted to us on the first Monday of March, and it automatically sets the project before us at our, that next meeting for introduction and the subsequent meeting for vote. Um, if the first day of March is a Tuesday. If the first day of March is a Tuesday, then it skips the whole introduction process and just ends up on our second meeting agenda. And then the code provides that we can increase decrease or approve the budget as written, but there are no line item amendments allowed. But the maximum local contribution essentially establishes cannot increase budget beyond what we are able to give. Thus, the assembly's real only actions are to approve or reduce the budget. And still, there's another provision that says the assembly shall approve the budget as amended and appropriate the necessary funds by before sixty days before the end of the fiscal year. If the assembly fails to approve the school district budget and make the appropriation within the time stated, the budget proposal shall become the budget and appropriation for the fiscal year of the school district without further assembly action. And so any proposition to withhold a vote only falls upon a deaf ear of the law will enact. These processes that are choices are near. So I just want to make sure that's really clear for everybody who might be listening and understand the assemblies role in this effectively is increase, decrease, approve. If you don't do any of those, it's simply approved. And so that's our process before us on the meeting of the eighteenth, which will be coming soon. So any further matters on this topic? Probably go around for a long time on this. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. Oh, Mr. Hallman, go ahead.
Something I feel like we should make clear to the assembly. If this were to become the budget, which would be pretty horrific, but we are going into the year at a five percent fund balance, which we consider anemic. Now, if nothing bad happens until spring, we're probably in good shape. We've got a really good track record of staying on budget and our fund balance tends to go up from the positions we're unable to fill. But if something were to happen in the fall, like a school fire, like a major earthquake or like some of the other events that we have had. We could be in a situation where I think we'd be asking Mr. Ratliff to write checks that the balance couldn't cover. The only place we would have to turn to unless it was actually a statewide disaster would be the municipality. And I know that that would be a extremely difficult thing for everybody, but I do feel like we need to say it.
I can speak probably on behalf of myself, mostly the assembly and the mayor. Should an emergency befall our schools, the city will be there. Okay. With that, then we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. The next item is a brief legislative update ASD in the assembly. I don't know who's taking that on. Put that on the agenda.
So I can, Mr. I can take this really will be pretty brief. I just wanted to highlight that House Bill sixty nine was amended this week in House rules. There were a number of different changes that that will take some time to analyze and the district doesn't have a full report on at this point, but in short, from a funding perspective, it reduced a future permanent years worth of increase in the base student allocation, reduce the inflation factor that would be implemented immediately and then set a permanent increase to the base student allocation of a thousand dollars. I've been told anecdotally, the amendment that Member Lessons and I drafted and that got approved by the school board unanimously here was some of the inspiration behind that school of thought. And then we're also seeing districts like Fairbanks as well as potentially Keen Eye consider drafting their own versions of what we've passed here towards clearly articulate to their delegations that there's not only a need but a vision for what public education can be if we update the foundation formula the same way we increase spending authority for department budgets like public safety and corrections. With that said, there's also some compromise language regarding open enrollment, the a cellphone ban, which was one of the other things that the board implemented at our last meeting was also included. Definitely some some other technical changes as well. I think I saw something from the governor this morning indicating that he feels the bill is headed in the right direction. My understanding is there's going to be a floor vote on Monday. And so the twenty one member majority and the nineteen member minority will certainly have discussions as to what the bill looks like before it heads over to the Senate. And so that's the primary bill we're tracking right now for obvious reasons. The board certainly has continued to prioritize and continue to advocate for a return to defined benefit retirement options or a pension for public sector employees to include educators for obvious reasons. That was one of the top priorities that was outlined as part of a four thousand member survey that was done by the Dunleavy administration in twenty twenty one. They highlighted that a pension was one of their priorities and we need to make that happen to have an even playing field if we're going to bring up educators from the lower forty eight. And so those are, I think, are high points in terms of advocacy and legislative action. We appreciate the assembly's continued joint support and continuing to advocate for reasonable education policies and and bills to pass of the House and Senate. Thank you.
First, Miss Raleigh, and then Mr. Donley.
Yeah, thanks. And I appreciate the update on the funding and I will be watching that. Just in general, I'm curious. I know when we were kind of scanning bills that are out there, prefiled and and are out there now. There's a number of kind of policy or curriculum related bills and you know, we don't really get into that world, but just wondering if there's any of particular interest or concern. And again, I know that's not the primary focus of what we do as funders, but just wondering because I know there's a lot out there. Thanks.
I can I can speak for myself. I think there's one specifically regarding mental health curriculum that I think is valuable and I think by and large ASD does well to implement some factors, you know, financial literacy as another bill that I think is being pushed. At least it was out of Senator Wilkowski's office. Again, that's something that I think the bill came out of inspiration from something ASD is already doing. I I don't know of a bill that is on a fast track to pass that would pose any imminent challenge to ASD or any significant operational changes. However, if that changes, we certainly will leave the assembly in. The legislature seems very intent and hyper focused on funding and then to a lesser extent, the the pension reform bill at this point at least.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Donley.
Thank you. One item that the assembly and the school board unanimously agreed on as a priority for the community with legislative agenda was the funding of a new district cost differential study. I don't believe any progress has been made on that yet in the legislature.
Are you aware of anyone in Juneau carrying that project? No, okay, thank you. Anyone else in the legislative report? It's definitely a go time in Juneau. They're having fun down there, fun in quotes. Okay, then we have the item that was added to the agenda. This is the Lakewood Charter School Conversation. Just precedent to the conversation, I will say that there was a letter that was sent to us by Mr. Salt or sent to the school district and the school board. And in it, I think it's fairly careful not to levy any direct allegations, but I think it is a bit. There are some issues there that I think everyone should exercise caution and discussing so as not to direct any kind of unwarranted aspersions toward any members of either of these bodies. And so let's just have caution as we proceed and let these processes work out as they may. So, Mr. Salt, you asked to put this item on the agenda.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And and I'll say that letter is written from what I've heard. It's one side of the story. So we definitely need to hear the other side, but I want to share what I have. And I'm not going to speak to any ethical issues. We all have them. I was past president of Roka Shula Incorporated. So I believe we all have a duty to to separate those conflicts that we all have and definitely disclose those conflicts, which is very important. I don't have any, I don't want to comment on the schools involved. I think the schools are all great programs. And the way I look at this is I'm removing the schools from the conversation. So but I'll I'll include them because it gets confusing without it. School A, Alaska Native Native Cultural and Charter School is in a five hundred eighty thousand square foot building, Abbott Loop with three hundred fifty six students, which is designed to hold four hundred and sixty one, so seventy seven percent occupancy. Lease expires in three years, paying zero rent. Now, the facility at a loop does require repairs. I I don't have the details on that. I don't know what they cost. I understand as to the fire system. I do understand that we have approved roughly two point five million dollars to make those repairs. I'm not sure if that covers the total bill. School B, Roka Shula, is in a thirty nine thousand five hundred square foot facility with four hundred and eighty five students. I don't know the design capacity, but five hundred rings a bell, so I'm going to say ninety seven percent occupancy. That needs to be confirmed. And their lease expires in five to six months at a cost of seven hundred and thirty eight thousand a year. The available facility, Lakewood Elementary, is roughly sixty one thousand feet. Scheduled designed to hold five hundred and twenty five students. So School A, Alaska Native Cultural School would fill that at sixty eight percent. School B, Roka, would fill it at ninety two percent. I know AS and D ASD made the recommendation for Roka to go in there. It does seem to make sense when I remove the names and look at the financial cost of moving, paying rent. All these costs don't necessarily trickle up to ASD. But I will bring you a solution, possibly. Proceeding with the move for Alaska Native to Lakewood and then move Roka into the newly remodeled and repaired Abbott Loop School. If you could do that before the next school year, otherwise you're going to have one or two, most likely high, short term rents paid by Roka that hopefully ASD would help with in some way, although I have to go on through the budget. That's a that's a tough ask. Not to mention you would have double the moving cost versus only one. But it would provide a very clear, well-defined, executable, a hundred percent within our control to solve the problem for ANCS and Roka's short term problems. It would make sense to stick with the to repair Abbott Loop and allow ANCS to stay there and stick with the the administration's recommendation. But again, I don't have all the details. I've been trying to dive into this after my phone's been ringing off the hook since I think it was Wednesday night you had the meeting. But just want to hear any comments on on how we're going to get out of this this decision and solve this problem. Thank you.
The idea has come up. I will ask staff to correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think there's any way we can remodel and take care of the fire suppression issue during this summer. It's complex. We have asked the administration to come back to the board to talk about how much would have to be spent to bring the building up to code from where it currently is, because the last time it was really looked at in detail was several years ago. That bond to do some repairs to Abbott was passed prior to us considering that the building was going to be closed. But it is still approved by the voters. That money is still there. I don't know that it's sufficient to to actually do it. There there's a discussion about a system that might be able to be installed without raising the roof. But if we were to put in a conventional fire suppression system, we literally would have to raise the roof of the building. Inside Abbott, I can stand flat footed and reach up and touch the ceiling and I'm not a real tall guy. But there's just not room to put anything up there without it interfering with folks. You would possibly bump your head on a fire suppression system there. So but but using it as housing for at least a couple of years or possibly longer. I know our operations department is talking with them about that. And with the will of the board, I I can't imagine there would be objection to making that happen if that is the best way forward for them.
Can you clarify what that is, making that happen?
A move for Roki into Abbottwood out of their current location.
Okay. Mr. Salt.
No, I appreciate that and I just look forward to the ongoing discussion of of how best to I guess, solve the problem. I know it's not easy. It's been stated several times. But we do have, you know, again, on paper, it looks like the wrong decision was made. Again, I admit I don't have all the issues and all the details like the school board or the administration would. But it seems like you have a very short term problem with the lease at Roka Shula. And maybe I gives you a few more years with ANCCS and Abbott Loop. But I hope we can find a solution that works for everyone without jeopardizing either program since I want to see them both be very successful. Thank you.
Mr. Higgins.
Thank you. I've got a lot of issues to address, but let me just say, first of all, I know no one at Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. I have no kids going there, no financial interest at all. I did encourage them to speak out to the board on what they would like to have. In fact, I encouraged them to do three different options. That was something I discussed with the superintendent who suggested they give us a A, B, and C type of approach. And at their request, when they're working, when they're, one of their committees met, they asked me to join in. I know Mr. Jacobs joined in too, and so I attended that and I felt like that was giving them information that was appropriate and that's it. The history of here just a little bit real quick is that at one time they thought they had to raise the roof at Abbott Loop. Then about five, about six years ago, seven years ago, then see the chief operating officer with Tom Ross, he came in and said that's not required for code purposes. You simply put something on top. It would cost about a million dollars to do that. It did not require raising the roof. And that would be all that would be required to do it. And so it was kind of being removed from the school district of being a school replacement. That then about two years ago, when we closed schools, ANCCS reached out. They were trying to relocate. They had been to their original school was closed because of code issues. They were then, some of them at East High School, very hostile for them in that kind of situation. The superintendent supported placing them in Abbott Loop. I like that. And then they reached out again when I, one of my schools that I visit. And they were concerned because there was a five year limitation that was approved that they had to address the code issues in those five years or it would be not be allowed to be continued. Given the low cost, I advocated for it. That was not being supported. Then I was told that the cost might be three million and I said, what can we do? And there wasn't support for it. In fact, at the end of last year, with the administration's recommendation and the board approval, they added it to the list that in when the five years were up that we would eliminate the school level it, remove it for the for the municipality. Someone had to request the municipality. They want to use it for other things that land if it's not being used as a school. I I had concerns about that as well. I looked at last meeting with the possibility that if we can somehow keep Abbott Loop and commit to doing that, then we would have ANCCS there, Roka Shula at Lakewood, and I saw that as a win win. That discussion in the work session didn't go well as far as fixing and addressing Abbott Loop. And so that made it so that it was vulnerable. Abbott Loop, at the end of the next few years, they have to be gone. And they would be out. There was the likelihood of having another school location is low. My goal was to safety. If Lakewood, I'm not so, I'm not worried about the cost so much. I think if we get the thousand dollars, Roka Shula was looking at six hundred and something thousand to seven, six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars additional funding. They'd be able to recover that. But I my concern was safety. When we have a big earthquake, hospitals and the schools built for ASD are safe. And I like and for all charter schools, that's a concern to me. But I didn't have there the opportunity there, the the choice to keep ANCCS there. So the issue was Lakewood is limited to one and so I'm only going to have one school, not Abbott Loop. And that's concerned. So ANCCS would be vulnerable of having no school. While Roka Shula was vulnerable paying more money with additional BSA, I believe that we're going to get. The risk to to Alaska Native Cultural Charter School after everything they've been through and everything else is pretty high. That school, by the way, does very well. When we compared it to other charter schools, it was number one in growth compared to how those same types of kids are doing within our school system. And I just saw a recent study. They were number two in growth per year in third grade upon which they're growing. They're behind academically, but the growth is very good. The other part, we had feedback from the community was that they had an interest in ANCCS, but those kids can go into the school easily. You're not going to take a third grader coming into the thing and adding into immersion program. I understand that. But still, my my primary issue with safety was number one and then academics is number two. This would give Lakewood a kitchen. It would give them a library and it would give them the space. ANCCS has over a hundred people, I understand, on the waiting list trying to get in and that's a factor as well when you want to compare. When you want to compare the numbers, they can't meet that. They've turning it down, and they've been successful that way. So both schools would benefit from, from this within that. Do I think that we're going to close a school in the next two years? That's what the, the, I think the administration was looking for, like during that period of time. Uh, and it didn't happen, okay? And I'm not optimistic that we, if we do close a school, that's going to be large enough for either one of these schools. Uh, so my primary concern is safety, but we only got one school for that. And then academics, what's best for the kids. I understand the frustration with Roka Shula because I, as I said in the school board meeting, it was the most frustrating school board meeting I've ever attended in thirteen years. It was unreal. Uh, this is not an outcome I was happy with. Uh, I think we had options and we didn't do it. We're now talking about Roka Shula coming into a school that we didn't let ANCCS stay. That's kind of interesting. Uh, within that. So this, I, I'm more than disappointed with the outcome of this. I, uh, and, and, and not being able to be more successful with it. I think there was a gamble here that they thought they'd close the school good enough for uh ANCCS. It didn't happen. And so as a result, we were in this box. But I, I appreciate that the presentation with the administration was, let's try to fix it up. And, but the re- response in general from the, from the board members with comments then were not supportive. So, um, uh, that's why this thing came out the way it was and highly dissatisfied and, and frustrated I was. I was almost late today because I was working on my dissertation in response to how frustrated I am uh to share. But that's what took place. I don't like it. Uh, can we do other things to help? We need to. All of our charter schools are in buildings that are not built safe for earthquakes. They are inadequate for what we're doing, and they are ASC kids. And they are, they are our ki- I mean, ADN, um, hey, 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 for school district kids, okay? And we need to, we need to do more for them, but it's difficult and within that. We're not, I have not supported a closing of school just to make it available for um a charter school. I don't think that's appropriate. I think we can multi-use a school, and we can address some issues that way. But this has been the most frustrating situation I've ever dealt with. I appreciate the comments here. What can we do to, to help Roka Shula? And recognize, I was not supportive of putting the only Alaska Native charter school out on the street again. And, and I believe that in two years, that's what, that's what they would be looking at, trying to find something, and that was unacceptable too. So, given that difficult decision, the board voted four to three, put ANCCS there. Given the limited options we have and the impact, the impact of Roka Shula, I think, will be addressed, the financial part, with something with uh a BSA. Let's face it, the entire school district is being gutted uh if we don't get a BSA inquiry. So, uh, it's, of course, it's impacting all of our charter schools just as well. But I was more optimistic going into that meeting and disappointed uh that we got where we did. But I was not going to abandon AC, eh, the, the only Alaska Native charter school and put them in that same spot. And I am, eh, they gambled two years in a row that they would find another place. I think the next two years would be a gamble too. You know, really, what's cool, what's close, it has to be large enough to meet those demands. An acapelli wouldn't have worked. If it would have, I think we would have looked at that. So I don't know what was going to happen the next two years. Could be schools close enough for either one, but this was not a good outcome from my standpoint. I appreciate the, the trying to do something with um, uh, Abbott Loop because I know that the, the community there didn't want that school closed earlier, and they were fighting for it. And they were supportive of what's going on right now. They were even trying to build a park behind it with the parks and range, parks for that school, for those kids. It was great, but that's what was at.
Mr. Higgins, uh, I thank you for testing out your dissertation. So, um, we have a few people in the queue and five minutes left and no majority, no quorum on the Assembly to extend the meeting. So, um, I have in the queue, Mr. Jacobs, and Ms. Brawley, and Mr. Donnelly, and four minutes. So, choose wisely.
And so I'll be, I'll be as brief as I can, um, just to the member salt point about um how the board can help. Um, one of the things that the board did at our last meeting was, uh, I specifically asked the administration to examine how we can utilize the annual loan payment that um the program is making um to ASD on an annual basis to repay an initial two million dollar investment uh to be in their current building, as I understand it. Um, that's somewhere between the neighborhood of a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. So I think that's one option available um, to the board, um, approved in amendment I made to include language to prioritize the two programs not chosen for a facility, Highland Academy and Roka Shula, um, in future rightsizing conversations. Previously, in mid-December, we adopted a rightsizing memorandum which committed um to continuing the conversation as to reducing our footprint at the elementary level. Um, we know that we need to continue having that conversation about rightsizing our um space that we use for elementary schools and that there are potentially other uses for programs like um Roka and Highland Academy. And so I, I remain committed and will work with my colleagues to have us continue that conversation. Um, and then just yesterday, I was in contact with President Holloman about um adding a item to our next business meeting specifically about the possibility about allowing Roka Shula to use the remaining time on the Fire Marshal's approval that I think goes through um the next couple of fiscal years, um, and school years. Um, while we um work with them and collaborate through the rightsizing process to identify another building uh that might be a suitable candidate. And so I think there's a few irons in the fire on the conversation. Uh, isn't complete yet and, and won't be complete. Um, but I, I think I will speak for, at the very least, myself, but I suspect more in saying that we will um utilize the rightsizing process to, one, reduce our footprint responsibly, um, and then, two, benefit as many students as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two minutes and two speakers. Ms. Brawley.
Yeah, uh, disclosures, uh, Lakewood Elementary is in my district. Uh, we have a couple of kids that are going through. One has gone through Polaris, uh, so uh, not any stake in, in either of these schools. I do vote at Lakewood Elementary. I guess the, the two things that I would hope, i- it sounds like we're really just uh extending a conversation that happened at the last school board meeting. So we're spending a lot of time doing that. Um, I would hope, one, to observe that we're asking at least one of the charter schools, whoever ends up in Abbott Loop, to be in a building that doesn't have proper fire suppression. So that's, either way, that's unfortunate. Um, and then also, um, because I, I know we have kids at Polaris, um, I know that the Roka Shula building was built recently, so I would be curious to make sure that that's part of the conversation as well. Um, again, I don't know the right answer. It's not my call, but just to note that that building was built a few years ago. And so my question is, um, why are they moving? And I understand it is the rent. Um, and again, I'm not trying to say who should go in that school, but I think that needs to be part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
Yeah, I agree with the comments of Member Schulte, and I voted against changing the superintendent's recommendation. And I supported putting Roka Shula into Lakewood. I also support upgrading the Abbott Loop building to ensure a continuing home for the Alaska Native Charter School.
And I will conclude by um telegraphing to the public testifiers that um while there probably were some really important things within the context of the communications, a lot of that was lost with the theatrics in the communication, because people serve on this body. They serve publicly and they serve honorably. And um, the kind of that, that part of it, I don't think served your cause very well in the effort. But thankfully, Mr. Salt did put forward a communication that made clear some of the concerns, which will hopefully be addressed through the internal school district processes. And um, we definitely robustly support public participation, and I would offer, if you want to be heard, it's better to strip away some of that, whatever that was. And so, um, with that, thank you, everybody. Uh, this was a very packed agenda, even though there were just a couple of items, and uh I think we got through it. I think we will wait to receive your communication. We have this item before us on the eighteenth. We'll see some of you there. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you all for being here.